Okay, okay, we can get started. Welcome to the June 12th, 2023 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Here.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Khan.
Here.
Mr. Partland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Present.
Ms. Strang.
Here.
Mr. Drescher.
Here.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. Okay, so we have no minutes ready for tonight. We'll take care of that action on the minutes from the last meeting at our next meeting. There are no public hearings, so we'll move right to the privilege of the floor. So anyone wishing to be heard regarding any planning and zoning matters in the Town and Niskiuna, please come to the microphone, state your name and address for the record, and we'll gladly listen to what you have to say.
I'm Doug McFadden. I live at 1388 Row Road in Niskiuna. I'm here to talk about the two-home development that Fred Posenelli is proposing. I guess I wanted to make a couple comments. It won't be long. First, I want to acknowledge Clark Henry for helping us fathom a lot of technical stuff. I'm not a civil engineer, but he's been very helpful in getting information to us. I've got a concern that this project appears to be moving quite quickly. That is, that you're going to approve it maybe tonight. And I guess I'm wondering what the urgency is. Time is money, even I know that, but I'm just concerned about it. And I guess the other thing is, it seems like that you don't have the final side-off from the town-designated engineer. And there's still back and forth going between him and Mr. Steenberg. So I guess I, knowing that there's still this tennis game going on, I'm kind of curious as to what's going on. Why do we need to move this so quickly? Maybe I misinterpreted. Maybe you aren't going to do anything tonight. But that's where I'm coming from. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Privilege of the floor. Hmm? Yeah, just come on up if you want to speak. Planning and zoning, any matters?
My name's Mary Rose. I live in Niskiuna on Ruffner Road. Thank you for all you do. I've never been here before. I'm going to apologize ahead of time in case I feel upset, but what's happened is, on Ruffner Road, there's a home. Long story short, the house was sold about a year ago. There weren't many people. The people that owned the home came by, I would bring them bubbles or try to welcome the kids, and I noticed they were gone again. I think Laura might have told you about it. So what happened was about six weeks ago, I noticed all different cars pulling it out of the driveway. On Ruffner, the homes are very close to each other. And also, I just want, even though I'm bringing this up because it's affected my life, but I also care about the people that bought the house. So I'm here really just to find out what the rules are and, you know, your thoughts on it. So I've lived in Niskiuna for 25 years. I've lived in this house almost 20 years. My husband's a physician in the area. I have helped, you know, just with the community. We pay taxes. I help with the PTO here at Rosendale, the high school. I was the deputy for COVID-19 during the COVID. So like, we've done a lot for the community. We love the community. So I noticed cars coming and going. So the first weekend, I thought, okay. And there's like six cars on the road. The next weekend, I noticed another set of cars. So I'm like, what's going on? So my husband and I were like, maybe we should take pictures. Because I'm a little concerned about my own safety, because I don't know who the people are. And then the next weekend, I'm sitting with some friends. Mind you, the garage windows were painted, so at night, the light would go on, and it looked like, I didn't, honestly, I didn't know traffic was going on. I didn't know what was going on. So I'm sitting with my neighbors. I'm like, do you know what's going on over there? They're like, oh, that's an Airbnb house. So I saw the owner, very nice couple. I said, what's going on? I see all these cars coming and going. You know, they're partying a little outside, not tremendously, but, I mean, people are entitled, have years or whatever. But it's the thing is, I don't know who they are. I don't know who the cars are. They're coming and going. And she said, yeah, we're renting it. So my first question, I guess, to the town is, these are short-term rentals, so in the last six weekends, I've had five different sets of people coming and going. I don't know who they are. I put up some cameras this weekend. I inquired about putting trees up because I am concerned. You know, my husband has to deal with me on the weekend. I'm like, oh, verbal people are here again. And it's upsetting, because, you know, 25 years in a community, and then a couple bought the house. I don't know their reasoning, but, you know, maybe they have a right to do what they're doing, but it's changed my life. You know, little things, you know, cars on the street, garbage cans. But, you know, the girl is trying. The owners are trying to keep it nice, so I'm not here to belittle anybody. I just think these short-term rentals are affecting me directly, enough that I may consider to ignore. You know, I thought Niskiuna, I moved to Niskiuna to be in a residential area, not to live next to a hotel. You know, when people travel, they'll call, you know, the hotels or the tourist agents, and they'll say, Airbnbs are changing our communities. I wrote a few things here. First of all, me, it's my own uneasiness, not knowing who's next door, not knowing why they're there, not knowing what they're doing, not knowing if they're supposed to be gone. It can also lower the values in the area. You know, I, so from what I understand, this is not the first time this came up to the town, I think. So you probably know more than me, because I'm not a lawyer. But, you know, I'd just like to know, you know, is this, is this the way the community's going? I mean, she's from California. Can you just buy a house in Niskiuna and just make it a commercial property? I mean, are we allowed to do that? And so, I, just, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh, one last thing. It's across the street from this bus stop for children. They never notified any of us that they were doing this, and I don't have little children anymore, but I have a concern for little children waiting on a bus stop. You don't, I mean, most people are good, but, you know, if you have people coming in every weekend, that's different. Eventually, someone's not going to be so good. Okay, sorry. Yes.
No, I was just going to say that usually we don't respond and get into discussions during privilege of the floor.
Oh, okay.
So what we'll do is we'll take your information. I'm sure that we can talk about it later on in this meeting, either during reports or commissions in business.
Okay.
Laura can give us an update on any rules and regulations. And we have had discussions regarding Airbnb. We can talk about that later on, okay?
Okay. Do I do anything else in to help facilitate?
Not right now. Just, you know, you can listen if you have to go. This will be obviously.
No, I can sit.
Okay. It'll be, it's recorded, and it's available on YouTube also, this meeting. So if you have any concerns, you can always reach out to the planning department and work with Laura.
Laura, thank you.
Okay? Or Mr. Henry. Okay? Thank you. Okay. Privilege of the floor is still open. Anybody else?
Good afternoon. My name's Norman Schilling. I live at 1400 Row Road. I'm going to follow up on Doug McFadden, my neighbor's, comments. In looking through the TDE's report, there are approximately seven or eight still open items. And in reading the documentation that came in preparation for this meeting, it said that, well, the town board's going to say, if provided that all the requirements of the TDE are fulfilled. Well, you could have said that right at the beginning, before we even started all this discussion. And I think it's also important that we have documentation and that neighbors are able to see the final resolution before the planning board approves to move forward with this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Privilege of the floor. Did I see no one else here? Laura, did we have anybody online that would like to speak tonight?
I know Ms. Postka had asked for the link, but I'm not sure she wants to speak. Juliana, did you want to speak?
Thank you for asking. I'm all set.
Okay. Thank you.
And then I also received an email, which I forwarded to you guys. The writer intended to be here tonight, but let me know very, very shortly that she was unable to come. I know I'm not really reading emails into the record, so I'm just going to just summarize really quickly, just because I don't think that you guys would have a chance to read it. But essentially, they just had some concerns about the Posenelli property. They live on Angelina Drive, and their home is the only one on Angelina Drive with a steep hill going down from the Posenelli property to their house. They spent a lot of money last year installing a 70-foot-long water collection French drain through the lower area of the backyard. But even with no development, their backyard remains too wet to mow until late spring. So they're just very concerned about water moving from the Posenelli property down that steep hill to their property. And they are asking for a swale or a deep trench to be dug along the property line that aligns with their, well, lines with the property line to keep, to keep any of the drainage away from their land. Just to summarize, so they've invested thousands of dollars to remediate the current drainage problem. They have a unique steep hill, and they are requesting a swale to be dug. Deborah Malik and Elliot Mazur.
Mazur. Okay. Thank you. Anything else, Laura?
That's all I have.
Okay. Here, you're seeing no one else to speak during privilege of the floor. We'll close privilege of the floor. Next on the agenda, we have a planning department presentation regarding average density development process. Mr. Henry, have you been doing that today?
Sure. Thank you, Chairman Walsh. Laura and I just wanted to give a quick update on the presentation we made several months ago about the process that an average density development subdivision follows according to the Town of Niskiuna code. And just to refresh everyone's memory, there are basically two parallel branches of an ADD project. There's a special use permit, and then there's the basic seeker determination or the overall plan of the subdivision. The special use permit must be reviewed and approved by the town board. And if you see under item one, that's the path that, that a sketch plan would follow, and that has been followed all the way through item F. The planning board had a public hearing. Notifications were mailed out, and ultimately, the planning board made a recommendation to the town board regarding the special use permit. So that special use permit is now at the point where the town board would have to take action on it. However, that is essentially placed on hold until the seeker determination, the state environmental quality review, is complete on the project. The CAC made a recommendation to the town board, and they recommended that the town board make a positive seeker determination. And by saying positive, they recommended that the project would have a negative impact on the environment. So the next step in that process now is that the town board has to review that, and the town basically creates a scoping document and findings. And those two documents kind of refine the areas of the project that the town feels need to be investigated further in what's called an environmental impact study. So if the town board follows the recommendation of the CAC and chooses to make a positive seeker determination, that would require that an applicant prepare an environmental impact study, which is essentially another branch of this project. And Laura and I were going to go back to this document and update it to show that process, to add a little more detail. So we just wanted to get a little word out to people who are interested in an average density development project and add a little more detail to what would happen to the project with a positive seeker determination. So, sorry, Laura, can you fill any details of anything I may have left out there?
No, I think that's perfect.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, Chairman Walsh.
No, thank you, Mr. Henry. Appreciate that. And yes, thank you. All right. That's it for the presentation. And under new business, we do have one resolution tonight that will, if the board wants to, we'll go forward with, and that's Resolution 2023-16. That's a resolution for approval of plat, plat plan for a two-lot minor subdivision and lot line adjustment at Entenio Park, Posenelli Drive. The resolution was posted to the web, but I typically read the conditions, and they're quite extensive, as they usually are with subdivisions. And I plan on reading those into the record if everybody can bear with me for a moment. Okay? Resolve that this planning board and zoning commission does hereby grant minor subdivision approval for a two-lot subdivision that tax map parcel 40 dot dash 1 dash 54 dot 11, as shown on the aforementioned, a five-page drawing set by Brett Steenberg, P E P L L C, subject to the following conditions. One, the declaration of intention regarding future construction activity on Lot 4 of the four-lot subdivision, referenced in Niskiuna Planning Board Resolution 2020-15, is attached to this minor subdivision approval and included as a condition herein, as amended to include applicant and owners who are designated by the town attorney. Two, prior to recording the plat, a final letter of approval shall be received from the town-designated engineer regarding all engineering and drainage aspects of the site plan. Three, prior to recording the plat, any engineering, sewer connection, and drainage concerns will be addressed to satisfaction of the town superintendent of water-sore and engineering. Four, prior to recording the plat, the aforementioned subdivision drawings shall be revised to include a note stating that no further subdivision of lots one or two are allowed. No further subdivision deed restrictions for Lot 1 and 2 shall be provided to the planning department for review and approval. The deed restriction shall be filed jointly with the subdivision plat. Five, as noted under the heading Future Subdivision Note of the aforementioned site plan drawings, any future subdivision of the unrestricted lands of the amended Lot 4, the lot line adjustment, will require a major subdivision review as required under Town and Niskiuna subdivision law at that time. Six, prior to recording the plat, any minor textual changes to the subdivision map will be addressed to satisfaction of the town planning department. Seven, prior to recording the plat, a tree plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Niskiuna Tree Council. The planning board requests that as many trees as possible, including unmarked trees and understory, be preserved during the building permit and construction process so that the forested nature of the land is maintained. Eight, prior to issuing a building permit, the new houses shall be referred to and reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. Nine, prior to issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall participate in a preconstruction meeting with the Town of Niskiuna if so requested by the planning or building department. Ten, prior to site disturbance, the subdivision map shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the preconstruction meeting, if any, and distributed as required to the town into all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town labeled for construction. Eleven, prior to the preconstruction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. Twelve, prior to final certification of occupancy for either of the two new homes, the applicant shall sign a storm water control facility maintenance agreement and access agreement in order to ensure the proposed store water facilities are installed and maintained per plans. Thirteen, in accordance with Chapter 180 Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the superintendent of water-sore and engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. Fourteen, wetland boundaries shall be recorded and shown on any plat plan of a building lot containing wetlands. Wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered anyway without first contact in the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the Town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. Fifteen, should the garage for elevations, elevation for an individual lots deviate by more than six inches from the elevations approved for construction by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission or the Building Department, then revised grading plan shall be submitted immediately to Town Engineering Office for their review and approval. Sixteen, the limits of clearing on this subdivision shall be strictly adhered to during construction. To the maximum extent practical, the applicant shall retain as many of the sites healthy trees and natural vegetation as possible. Driveways shall be installed with least possible disturbance to trees. And finally, number seventeen, the portion of land to be annexed to Leasy Development Company LLC shall be conveyed in such a manner that the portion is combined with six St. Gerard Lane, Lots 4, lands now or formerly of Leasy Development Company LLC immediately, and shall at no time be considered a freestanding parcel per Niskiuna code. Ms. Gold, do I have a motion?
I say move.
Motion is moved for adoption. Do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
And seconded by Mr. Scrubby Tennis. And maybe I could have the applicant come forward. And I know we have your engineer, is Mr. Steenberg's online, correct? Was he online, Mr. Steenberg, regarding this project?
Yeah.
Yep. So in case the board has any questions or anything, you had an opportunity to take a look at the conditions. You have any comments or concerns at all?
No, I saw a draft of them, and I'm fine.
Most, you know, there's some concern, you know, from the public tonight. But I tell you that I've been doing this a long time, and most of the conditions in this subdivision approval are typical conditions that need to be closed out. Some of the exceptions might be here is, you know, the concerns about the lot to be annexed, you know, moved over to the Leasy Development, and making sure that that follows the previous approvals of a prior resolution that we had approving his subdivision. So there's a, you know, a few things in here that are aimed toward that, making sure that that happens correctly and everything, and address any concerns. So there's some extra conditions that we normally don't see that are related to this project itself. But as far as the town-designated engineer, I mean, I took a look at the latest letter from town-designated engineer. I didn't see any showstoppers that, you know, that I've seen in the past at all. It seemed like they're all doable, and that's why I wanted to see if Mr. Steenberg or you would like to, do you have any concerns with any of the open items that were put forth by the town-designated engineer at all?
Yeah, this is Brett Steenberg. I apologize for not being able to be in attendance personally this evening. I did look over the letter. I actually was on vacation last week, so I didn't get a chance to, to write a response to it and address the changes, but I did look over the letter, and there's no showstoppers there. A lot of it's just asking for some additional information that we've already done that just needs to be included in reports, things like that. I know Matt did take a look at the sewer line out there today, and there's, you know, we're able, we will be able to tie into the sewer line without having to go to New York State DEC for a sewer extension, because the sewer line does extend 136 feet up Posenelli Drive, where we show extending to, and with the manhole there. And I did confirm with them that we would be able to make that connection without having to actually have a formal permit by DEC. So I think things are working through the process. There's nothing major in that letter, and I appreciate the board taking the time to move forward with the resolution hopefully this evening.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Steenberg. Do you have anything else, Mr. Posenelli?
No, I just wanted to, you know, thank the board. It's been, you know, a process that I think we had pretty much everybody's involvement, concerned parties. We've done our due diligence in trying to address them, and in the end, we want two successful homeowners to enjoy their property and not to affect neighbors in a negative way, and I think we've accomplished that.
Yep, and I appreciate the hard work and the effort that you put forth, especially in the engineering. I know there's concerns from the neighbors, but it was quite a bit here for a two-lot, you know, subdivision. A lot of work was done that I see. So thank you.
And I will note that this process has been ongoing for many months at this point, and that many of the conditions in the resolution cannot be met until after this approval is granted.
Brett, just a couple of quick questions on the TDE report on this separating the gutter and the footer drain piping, and also increasing the diameter to six inches. So it's an open TDE question, so I know condition number 11 will apply, but I know you just got back, but do you have any thoughts on that?
Sorry, I lost my mute button there. No, I, actually, I did look at that. That's not an issue at all to separate those two out. It's actually probably a good idea not to introduce the roof drainage with the footing drainage, because if anything were ever blocked up, it could potentially impact the basement of the homes. So we will separate those lines out and increase the size to six inches. Really, not a, not a major issue.
Okay. And I know this came in late, but the letter that Laura read from the resident that's actually downslope from the property, this concept of a French drain, I mean...
We actually looked at this very early on, Mr. Khan. The, the, we actually have a swell running around the outside of the house, and I believe Mr. Cole even mentions it, and either one of his correspondents with me or with the town, regarding how we are draining the water, any of the water that's, we're creating on the site and actually diverting some of the water that's going there now away from it into our storm drainage system, which essentially, we're creating it, but without creating a blockage there. And the reason, we can't create a blockage or dam there, because once you create and channelize the water, we're not changing the flow patterns up there, other than around the house area, obviously, and that water we're capturing and putting into our system. But, you know, you will always have that area which sheds there now, which is actually much larger now, which is being cut off a little bit that will shed to those lots. Once you channelize that and drain that, you have to drain that to some location. I, you know, what we're proposing will not make their situation any worse, and, you know, may even make it slightly better based upon our drainage calculations.
Yeah, I quickly looked it over, and I think I agree with what you said, Mr. Henry. We sought a letter from the resident and now, but I just wanted you to verbalize that, for the record at least. I think it should be same or maybe slightly better.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Khan. Any other comments? Brett, could you just articulate, just for the public, what you think the single most significant addition to the TDE letter is, just out loud, in your review?
The single most, I didn't see any major additions in the TDE letter that I thought were big additions to the plan. They were all very minor. You know, probably the biggest thing is separating out the roof drainage and footing drainage, because you're separating those two, you know, you're putting in a second line there parallel to the other one. But I didn't see much in the way of any major changes in significance in that letter. Most of it was, you know, there were things like, we did provide the end calculation or the end values for the 7.44-inch rainfall, but we didn't include the hydrographs in the report, because the storm water management reports, I don't know if you've looked through it, it's, you know, that one, I don't know how, it was probably 200, 250 pages long. Adding more hydrograph makes it 300, 350 pages long. It just, things that, you know, they're technical things that just, I think you just want to see the calculations and make sure. But most of the stuff was, you know, minor in nature, just getting the TDE to sign up, you know, with, with the location of, or the town engineer to sign off with the location of the manhole and the location of the hydrant and that stuff, and that stuff that will work, you know, closely with them and make sure that they're okay with everything. But I didn't see any major issues.
Do you have any other questions, comments? Okay. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Ms. Gold.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution is approved. Okay? Still got some open items, but, you know, good luck, and I know you'll take care of them. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Okay, that's it for under new business. We have a couple items under discussion tonight, first one being 1222 Troy Connected Road. This is an application for a site plan approval for a tenant change at a lot that's partially within the Town of Niskiuna, actually predominantly in the Town of Niskiuna, or in Town of Colony and partially within the Town of Niskiuna. And we have representative applicant and representative of the applicant. If you don't mind, could you guys introduce yourself, and then you can just give us a summary of the project? We do have some paperwork, but it's great to hear it from you. Okay?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the board.
May I pull the microphone up a little bit? There you go. Thank you.
Better. My name is Jed Yathy. I'm an attorney from the law firm of Lenery Reisler. I'm the attorney for Capital Church. With me is lead pastor, Dr. Jason Karen-Patsos. And Capital Church currently is located in the Town of Colony, tucked away on Bly Road off of Central Avenue. And the church is under contract right now to purchase 1222 Troy Connected Road. I don't know how familiar you are with this property. The contract consists of seven parcels, four of which are located in the Town of Colony, three are located in the Town of Niskiuna. The building is mostly located in the Town of Colony. The, actually, I think 7% of the building is located in the Town of Niskiuna. So we are here applying for a change of use. The building had been used as a law office. I believe the property in the Town of Niskiuna is zoned for neighborhood commercial, and house worship is not permitted. house worship is not permitted. However, the portion of the building located in the town of Niskiuna is proposed to be used for two purposes, that that corner of the building would be used for a food pantry and I believe the church actually operates as food pantry one night a week for about two hours. And then also currently has a program for before and after school, a day, not a daycare, excuse me, a care program for children, I think it's school age children. But this church would like to expand that program, expand the hours for not just before and after school, but during the day. So the, while it is, the building, the entire building is, it is a church that would own the building, it operates, it would operate the sanctuary in the portion of the building located in the town of Colony, there could be spillover. But the, again, that portion of the building located in the town of Niskiuna would be, would be operated as childcare and food pantry. We have reached out to the town of Colony and we have received approval for a change of use to be used as a house of worship as well as daycare. And we are here just, that is, seeking your approval.
Is there any more action for the town of Colony? Does they have a resolution forthcoming or anything or is it?
Well, it is the, the approval for the change of use we have and it would be conditioned on further.
Site plan review?
Site plan review and application for the building permit. The, there would be no new improvements, no change to the footprint, the building, if this, you know, one step at a time. First, we would like, obviously, to know that we can use the property for the intended use. Then after that, we would like to look at what type of modifications would be necessary. The proposed change would be mostly cosmetic. There would be no structural changes to the building. There, the building is, has been used as offices there, would, the proposed changes would be laying carpet down, it would be removing and installing some walls, the office walls. Right now, from what I've seen and from discussing this with members of the church, those are the only changes to the, to the portion of the property that's located in the town of Niskiuna. Obviously, the other side of the building, it would be removing office walls to make room for the sanctuary.
Great, thank you. And we did receive through the planning office quite a bit of information. We have the sketch, you know, the drawings of the changes for the proposed construction, you know, the walls coming down, so on and so forth. And Mr. Henry spent some time taking a look at if it were allowed in the town of Niskiuna or even the portion that is allowed, the parking arrangement, and it appears that the parking should be sufficient if it, you know, based on the available parking deck is already on the site. The only question I, I was thinking of is, and it looks like there's no changes to access at all. I mean, you already got a curb cut, I believe it's Vli Road already, and if there's no proposed changes there, it is what it is, right?
Right.
And within Niskiuna, daycare or food pantry, whatever, I mean, it seemed like the hours were reasonable and we know that, you know, traffic's pretty heavy there probably in the morning and, you know, probably 4:30 ish to 6:00 somewhere in there, they got away quite a bit. It's, but obviously, I don't, as far as services, it probably weekends, I would assume anyway, right? So, so really the question is for Laura or Mr. Henry, do we usually like just defer to town of Colony? Do we write a letter and ask them to keep us informed of any site changes?
We have and can do that. We did that with the Lisi building and they didn't take our concerns into account. So, but we do have the ability to do that. The other thing is I talked with Elena today, the daycare is just a permitted principal use, site, site plan change for us to look at the daycare and then the food pantry because it's, it's less than, you know, 3% of the building can be considered an accessory use. So I think that we also have the ability to just do a, a regular kind of tenant change, a resolution on this if we wanted to not defer to the town of Colony.
Okay, all right. And by the way, Mr. Darpino, thank you, Dave. I submitted to say that, is recusing himself. And Mr. Drescher as, as an alternate is taking his seat for the record. Yeah, I don't...
I have a professional relationship with your architect. You're in good hands.
All right. Okay, so basically a change of tenant use. The only other question I guess I had was signage. I can't remember what's there. I'd have to drive by and take a look. They had a pretty good sign there, like, did they have electronic sign?
They also had an electronic sign too, yeah.
Yeah, which is, you know, we discourage and is that, is that staying, the sign that's there?
I don't think this would stay, but that's a discussion, obviously.
Yeah, maybe you could kind of think about that and let, let the planning office, what the intent for signage is. One of the things is, you know, we're, I guess, sensitive to signage, you know? We try to minimize our electronic signs that constantly are changing, you know?
The, the sign as it currently stands is one that shows date and time and so it's not a full color L C D or L E D screen. That, and then above that it has the, the name of the building.
Okay, yeah, I just couldn't remember, I didn't get down to it today.
Yeah, and so our initial thought was since it's already paid for, it's already there, change the name, but keep the structure as is, would be, and same on the building and all of this is on the Colony side.
Right, understand.
But change the, the letters of the name that was there and then put our church logo. Those were the initial ideas. Since there's an entrance that would be primarily, that would be solely used for the food pantry, if permitted, and this would be solely in the Niskiuna portion, is to be able to label that door for the food pantry, so there'll be some outdoor signage in the parking lot, but still outdoors.
Okay.
That's our, at this point plan.
All right, and I can understand utilizing the existing signage, if it's not one of those ones that we're concerned about where it's, you know, constantly chas, you know, changing and different colors and explosions and all that kind of stuff, because it is the entranceway to Niskiuna still, even though it's in the town of Colony, so that's, would be one of our concerns, I guess. All right, so we need additional information, Laura, from the applicant in order to do a tenant change? Do we have everything that we need?
I feel like Clark did a pretty thorough analysis on it. I think we have everything we need for our tenant change. I mean, sometimes, excuse me, I guess the only information really I didn't see in there, which maybe it was, is like number of children for the daycare, that type of thing we usually look at, and hours of operation of the daycare. But it's a wide open site with a lot of parking, at least on our side.
Yeah.
It's probably...
Yeah, I mean, if you have those numbers, it doesn't hurt to, you know, to provide them.
Yeah, the, the hours of operation I think are listed in there, like the before care and the after care. And so right now, that's currently what we run. And at our current site, we're licensed by the state to have up to 100 in our smaller footprint, but we're anticipating right now for the summer, we have 40 enrolled, probably going forth the school year, although we're licensed for 100, really, my wife's the director of that and she's looking to keep it right around 50. Down the road, wanted to have that open door to expand from before care and after care. Should we open a daycare, then those numbers would probably exceed 50, but certainly no more than 100. It's kind of what we're, we're looking for for that.
Okay, so we could, we could have a resolution. Our next meeting isn't until July 10th, so that's, it's a little bit of a way, a little bit away, so I think we could, we could have a tentative resolution for that meeting if everybody's okay with that. You know, and just the only thing I would suggest is maybe condition that, you know, if there's any, any open items that the planning department needs, such as, you know, the number of children, it sounds like we got a number tonight, but, you know, concerned with signage, just making sure if there's any sign changes were informed, so we at least get some input to that. Maybe we condition that and there's no change in ingress egress, so, you know, it's basically Vli Road, it is what it is, right? So...
Yeah, just a, just a couple of questions. Do you, I mean, the latest hour of operation that you have here, and it's for the food pantry, is at 7:30 P M. Does the church usage or daycare or food pantry just ever go later than that?
Currently, our youth ministry meets on Friday nights and they go till 8:30. On Tuesday nights, we have Narannon that goes from 7:00 to 8:00. As far as regularly scheduled events, that would be all that we have on the calendar currently. As a church, there are small groups that, you know, occasionally meet or a fellowship or something of the sort, but as far as throughout the year, those are primarily the latest. During the summer, we'll have vacation Bible school and so we'll have dozens of kids in the building and that we dismiss at 8 o'clock. Leaders, you know, cleaning up and rolling out after, but we really don't have any lately activities.
Okay, just a couple of quick related things and the, the root of my question has to do a little bit with traffic flow.
Yeah.
In terms of the daycare program, you're, at your current location, I think you're serving the Colony School Districts.
Correct.
Do you plan on also serving the Niskiuna School Districts, district?
If Niskiuna will bus, so primarily the students that arrive for before care and after care are bused there. Currently, the buses don't drive to 1222 Troy Connected Road because there's no need to. If they were, if the buses were willing to drop off there, then we would absolutely love to be able to serve both.
So the Colony Schools right now, do they have a plan for bringing students on buses to the new location?
Likewise, Colony doesn't need to drive to 1222 Troy Connected Road, so right now there are no buses going there. We're in conversations to see if that would be a possibility, but right now, there are no buses that go to, to that building. They go to our current building on 31 Vli Road, but there's none that go to 1222.
And again, slightly related, again, with traffic flow and movement of people in and out, especially young children, but now moving away from young children, the food pantry, what's your form factor for that? Do people come, park, go into the building, come out, or is it something else?
Correct, yeah. So they, they come into the parking lot, so we would kind of keep, similar to what we're currently doing, but they come in and they, they bring, their cars come into the parking lot and they come inside. Currently, we're able to bring, let two families come in at a time. With a larger footprint, our food pantry would go from approximately 800 square feet to about 1300, 1400 square feet. And so we could have a few more families that would be able to come in. They come in and they have an opportunity to kind of basically shop for themselves, walking around. So cars in the parking lot is, are waiting for their turn to come into the building and then a few families come in and building at a time. They select their items and then they're able to go back out.
Okay, look, I, I don't think it's anything fundamentally different from Stewart's or the, I forget who the other one is in the corner of, you know...
Dollar Tree.
Well, they're the gas station, right? I mean, it's the same, they're open late, it's the same kind of flow in and out, but I think I'm going to strongly recommend that you do work out a traffic flow that can be accommodating buses in the future, coming in at after school hours, right, 2:00, 3:00, 4:00 P M., especially with, you know, the way that intersection is set up. I, I mean, I know we have no authority over any approvals there on that side.
Those are good comments because we've looked at other daycares where we've asked, what's the flow, you know? You know, you want to, obviously the children dropped off close to the door and I'd be honest with you, I didn't look at the site plan with that in mind. Is it, is the, is the bus is able to get around? Is there enough room there? Is everything look like it's going to be okay for, for what you want to do?
I've never driven a bus, but that parking lot in Niskiuna, the site is, is pretty large and so I would anticipate that they'd be able to, to, to circle around. And on the backside of the building, there are one, two, three, four, four entrances into the building, just on the backside of, and then there's the, of course, the main one on the front, so access for kids to get in and out of the building as well as, you know, drop off and pick up.
And the nearest residence, I believe, is south, south of this property, probably on Vli Road? Did town or county talk about, or will they be talking about any residential concerns or has anybody raised any concerns? Because it does seem like a more intense use over what was there, obviously.
No, they haven't raised it. That's actually, I think it was actually a light residential zone and it's actually, it's permitted.
Okay. Yeah, because obviously, you know, what the, the law office is, you know, the, it's pretty quiet, you know? It seems like it was pretty quiet.
Yeah.
And this is to be a little bit more intense use here.
Yeah, so I think Chairman Walsh nailed it with the last comment, right? I mean, you, you are developing a, what I would consider from what you said, a more significant use that really needs to be taken into consideration, especially on that Vli Road, the southern Vli Road part of this property and access to the property. All right, so...
Going way back in time, wasn't it retail?
Way back in time.
Wasn't it dolls?
Dolls.
I'm sorry, what was it?
It was dolls.
It was a woman's...
High-end clothing.
Clothing store, yeah.
And it was very definitely retail. So the law office has been lowering traffic volumes than the retail it was, I believe.
We have a few questions over here. Do you want, you want to go first?
Oh, yeah, I'll just, because I have a quick one. So what's the current, like, lighting situation?
Can I just say a couple more?
Is it? It should be, yeah, yeah. Yeah, I'll put it once already. What's the, the current lighting situation for the parking lot and do you have any plans with changing that? Because you did mention that some of your things go till later in the night, 7:00, 7:30, 8:00, I think you said. So what are your plans with lighting and overhead lighting?
I'm going to have to defer to, hey, the, there's another member of the board who's actually planning all of this right now, who's out of town and he's working with a contractor, so we're, they're finalizing the plans and now we're waiting for the final contract. And so I, I'm not in a position to discuss the lighting. I, I do know that they're working on all the plans.
That's something that would be through the town of Colony for the site plan review process, because obviously, you know, we, keep the light on the property is always our goal, right?
Yeah.
And not impact the, the one resident that's nearby by any light spillage that we can, right? Which should be the goal, no matter what town you're in, right?
Yes, so just to be clear, all we are able to do here is make recommendations, right?
No, no, you guys have site plan. You guys do not have to defer. Most of the parking is in the town of Niskiuna, so a lighting plan would, oops, probably affect us. We would definitely, I think, want to ask for that lighting plan. But this is the line that goes right through the building.
Mm-hmm.
So like, the majority of the parking that serves this parcel is here, but the majority of the building is in the town of Colony. This is probably the closest residence, but I believe that it comes with the parcel. And then you have to sort of cross Vli Point drive then to get to the next residence.
That actually was part of, part of my question. I am uniquely familiar with this property because I was the stenographer when the prior tenant came in, in the town of Colony to try to reconfigure the building and, and put an additional parking garage in the back, as a matter of fact. And you, my understanding, part of the problem was that the traffic flow that I believe you're sharing with Vli Point, is that correct?
Sorry?
The, the traffic flow behind the building, where it says easement for ingress and egress, is that, is that being shared with Vli Point?
I, I have to tell you.
Okay.
I thought it was exclusive to Vli Point.
Okay, because I, I know that there were many upset residents coming in and it was a completely different development, completely different proposal for that back at that time, but, and I don't necessarily think that the neighbors would be alerted for a tenant change, although if there's site plan there, I don't know if we notify.
Uh, we don't usually for tenant change. This parcel does not actually access onto Vli Point Road.
Oh, okay.
Maybe that proposal was adding an access to Vli Point Road. The only parcels that access Vli Point Road are the condominiums and the doctor's office.
Okay, okay. Good, good to hear that. Thank you.
And that kind of goes to my concern that you, you're sure you have enough parking on site. I don't remember the total number. I know sometimes congregations for particular holidays need more parking and whatnot and I don't think the condominiums are going to let you park there.
Well, Clark did the parking analysis using the, the rules of thumb that we have and I believe it, it was adequate.
I'm just curious about overall, not just worrying about the Niskiuna part, but the whole parcel worked properly?
Yeah, yeah, we found that it's, I think, over 80 parking spaces and it's adequate between the two.
How large is the congregation? May I ask how large the congregation is?
Currently, we have 89 members. So on a good Sunday morning, we might have 150 or so.
And some of them are going to be coming in one car?
Yeah.
It's not one car per person, yeah. Okay.
Yeah, but the...
Because my concern would be that they try to avail themselves of nearby parking in Niskiuna.
And I, I don't think...
Which would be problematic.
There, there, right now, there are no plans to change any of the parkings, but looking at the existing configuration, we, we had actually noted that with the striping, just the existing line, the, the striping could be changed to create more spaces. And there's, there's also quite a bit of vacant land. I, I don't know what the church would have in mind. I don't know what the church would have in mind, what's used for that that existing, the vacant land. But if there were ever any any problems with parking, I think that just with the existing blind top, additional spaces could be created. And then, of course, there is significant additional land, which is a vacant space that, if it, if it actually became absolutely necessary to create more parking.
I mean, from the number, the total spots being eighty-four and from the numbers that are being mentioned, we we could quickly run into a parking situation, right?
That's my concern.
Yep. Well, I mean, if you're saying about a hundred and fifty, what was your count there? Cars or people or?
That's total people, adult and children between two surfaces.
Okay. But in terms of your membership, pretty much you almost have right now one-to-one between the number of members and the number of parking spots.
Well, we could, we could, Mr. Henry, you did the parking review and there was, trying to find it here in the paper, oh, here it is. I just found it, yeah. So it's based on the number of, as soon as I find it.
It's on page, yeah.
Yeah. The size, the number of seats, basically, is how it works. One, one space for each four seats. And at, Mr. Henry, eighty-nine spaces. So it's fifty-one parking spaces that were required based on the seats. And eighty-nine parking spaces available. So that's why I said that it seemed to be appropriate. And in a food pantry or childcare, won't be running at the same time through the service, most likely. Is that true statement, so? Do you know what Town of Colony, what your schedule is there?
At this point, we're actually just finalizing the contract, we're finalizing the plans with the builder. And then we're gonna move forward. We were, if we get get approval here, then we would move forward. And it was our understanding we'd be coordinating with the Town of Niskuna and the Town of Colony. So obviously, if we did not get approval here.
Yeah.
We're dead in the water. So we weren't really moving forward with Colony. So we know that they're actually going to be approved for the changes.
Okay. I got, I mean, I don't see any showstoppers personally. I know, I'm looking at Laura because she's the expert. And I mean, we could, we talked about having a resolution. I mean, I don't want to rush it, but it is, you know, July tenth is the next meeting, so we do have time. So I mean, we could condition the resolution to include things that, you know, any changes in striping, that you submit the lighting plan when it's available. That any changes in signage that you notify us, you know, things along those lines. Anything else that Laura can think of, the standard conditions, you know, to make sure that there's any changes that occur that, you know, that you notify us. So we have an opportunity to address them, you know? I think my view is that we should still be able to go forward with a tentative resolution next meeting, work up some conditions. If everybody's okay with that.
Are you planning on any facade changes to the, change to the exterior?
No, no, not currently, no.
Is the two-story house, the residential property occupied?
My understanding that it is. There is, I think there's a family living there. And we've actually reached out to the cell to see if they'd like to stay. If the church is okay with allowing them to stay on, if they'd like to stay.
And then there is some acreage, I don't know, I would guess maybe one total acre of undeveloped land. What are your intentions with that?
Well, as we discussed, right now, I don't know that there is any plan.
Yeah, as of right now, it's however we can best use it, whether it's leave it as it is. We need additional parking, that would be the go-to place for for parking. There's already some land space that we could put playground equipment or whatever the case might be on, near the home. But right now, we're kind of in that point of making sure that we can buy the property and that it's going to work. But as far as what to do with it right now, kind of the options are there. But likely, at some point, we're moving so that we can hopefully grow. Church is a hundred and five years old. And I kind of feel that we've kind of, kind of reached our maximum capacities as far as effectiveness, reached the community where we're currently at. So we're moving, hoping to be able to grow. And so if permitted, it would be great to be able to use that as parking or expanded playground space or something down the road as as needed.
One of the reasons I ask is the adjacent professional office building was before this board to add some tenants to their first ground floor basement. And parking was one of the constraints on that project. So I don't think, I think they, that was more preliminary. I don't think they've actually leased all of the space. But but I think, I think they were running into an issue with square footage to parking spaces available. So if we're, were the church to close and then down the road want to expand their parking, would they come before the planning board again? Or would that just be building department?
No, expansion of a parking would normally come before the planning board, I think. Because, but a lot of that open area is in the Town of Colony.
Some of it's in Niskuna.
Yeah, some of it's in Niskuna. So it sort of depends on where they decided to make the changes. We may still get a crack at it even just because it affects our parking, but that may end up being a deferral.
But that's a good item for a condition, right? If you, if you decide that you do want to, you do grow, which, you know, I hope you do. And if your site is limited, you would, at least notifiers that come back with the changes. So we'd have an opportunity to look at what's kind of condition that we would put forth in the resolution. I don't think that would be a problem. Right?
Those all ahead.
Okay.
Do you currently max out the parking at your Vli Road location?
No, not even close.
No, okay.
That'd be a nice problem to have, not even on Christmas or Easter currently. And we have less parking where we're currently at. But I mean.
Yeah, yeah, I'm looking at it here in the map. It's, it looks like it's something in order of about sixty spots tops.
So it seems like this is an ideal location, you know, since it's, it's Vli Road, it's the other end of it. But it's still, you know, reasonable location, right?
Yeah, for the community, for the congregation, it's still on Vli Road. It's still in Colony, at least on Sunday mornings in the sanctuary. But yet it does get it to a more traffic, more visible location.
Easy to find.
Any other comments or thoughts? Is everybody okay again with at least working up a tentative resolution? We'll see if there's any information in the planning department can reach out to you guys if there's anything that's lacking that they need to know in order to develop conditions for the resolution.
Yeah.
Does that sound reasonable, Laura?
Yeah, fundamentally, yeah. Like I said, it's just these issues in terms of the the increased usage and the diversity in the usage. Churchgoers, schoolchildren, food pantry, right? And it is a busy intersection. At certain times, it's a busy intersection. There's some low visibility as you're traveling eastward, right, coming from Niskuna. So I mean, those are things, I think, traffic flow and signing and directing of traffic flow is, I think, going to be important for you guys.
Like you said, I do drive that way a lot. And one thing I can say, there's a lot of traffic on Seven and there's a lot on Rosendale Road coming up. But there's not a lot going across or coming from the other direction. And that, you know, just from observation, which is a positive thing, you know? I mean, and you want the children to be safe when they get dropped off. So you, you know, you need to think about how how the bus movement is going to be to make sure that, you know, if you have to, like, relocate parking spaces so the bus can stop and allow the children to get off safely and get into the building. But that's something to think about. We've seen that with other childcare applications where they've actually showed us, you know, with the bus, the path of the, path of the bus and make sure everybody's safe to get into the building, sort of thing, you know?
Just for reference, at Colony, ask the same questions?
No, yeah. Uh, no, not yet.
Okay.
Probably, I assume they will, right?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. All right, nothing further, anybody? All right, we'll, we'll work something up. Laura will be, Planning Office will be in contact with you. And we'll draft a tentative resolution for the next meeting. If any surprises come up when Laura's working that or Mr. Henry's working that, again, we'll be in touch with you. And then we can always touch base on schedule because if there's any issues and it's going to take longer to count Town of Colony. But we can always, we can always modify it, but we'll try to get it done for July tenth.
There's, I'm sorry, there's one thing I do want to add. If 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 folks in congregants are driving from Vli Road in the Colony side to get to here, right? That is an undue traffic flow pressure on Vli Road also. It's very windy, very residential, very curvy, right? So we might need to note somewhere down the line that there needs to be some kind of impact of Vli Road that's.
And we could probably ask the engineer for like a traffic delta between, just using the manual of what what an office.
Yeah, professional office versus.
To generate versus a church. We could just have him put that delta together for us, just so we know.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are pulling numbers right out of the traffic engineer's handbook, you know, for the different uses.
Yeah. And again, I think most of Vli Road is in Town of Colony too, but still.
Yeah, it's a thirty mile an hour road also.
Yep.
Unfortunately, no, somehow. Okay? All right, okay, I think we're all set for tonight. Have any questions, please reach out to the Planning Office, okay? Appreciate it. All right, thank you. And let's see, next is twenty-three eighty-six Algonquin Road, an application for a lot line adjustment. There was some, I guess I call it preliminary paperwork included in the packet. Looks like there's some follow-ups, submittals that be had in order to get this application moving along. At least at the time when the package was put together here on the, you know, at the end of last week. Let me see if I can try and scroll to it.
I think my biggest concern was the shed. Yeah, thanks.
Yeah, is we, do we have anybody here for that or anybody online?
He's online.
Oh, Mr. Pfeifer.
Chair, Chair Walsh, this is Bill, Bill Pfeifer. Good evening.
Good evening, huh?
Thank you for putting me on the agenda for tonight.
Yeah, we haven't seen you in some time. I remember you've been here before, right?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
This, this, this time it's on a personal matter.
Yeah.
So the diagram or the map that you have up is is on point. What appears to be a square is is my, my residence located at twenty-three eighty-six Algonquin. It's approximately a two-hundred-foot-deep lot by two-hundred-and-fifteen feet across. But you can see the the back rear corner has an overlay from Gary Horton's lot, which is a keyhole lot off of Troy Road. What we're thinking about doing is there's a triangle in the middle of that diagram that's, the long side is about a hundred and nineteen feet. And the two sides comprising what's close to being a right angle are are one oh seven and sixty-three feet. It's shaded, it's about zero point zero eight acres. And it's entirely wooded. The idea is to keep it wooded. And if you look at the corner of that triangle that's closest to my house, what appears to be a right angle, that's about thirty, maybe thirty-five feet off of my house. It's fairly close. So if 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 Gary Horton were to clear those trees and erect a fence on the perimeter of his, his property line, it would be right on top of my house. So I've been here since two thousand and eight, two thousand and six, actually. Gary's been here longer. We both enjoy the woods, we both enjoy the buffer. And we've talked about this a couple of times. And more recently, we've come to a handshake where if this were approved, I would buy that that triangle from Gary. Now, in in drawing the triangle, we've come up with various proposals on the side that would be currently marked as sixty-three dot thirty-four feet. The one that makes the most sense to both of us places that triangle so that it's about five feet off of Gary's shed, which would make it a non-conforming shed, even though it's been there for at least thirty years. So what I'm hoping to do is to appear before you tonight, have my application denied and sent to the zoning board, seeking a variance. And then if they grant me a variance, come back to you with that variance and seeking the lot line adjustment.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Pfeifer. Obviously, the, in the packet, you know, there's the authorization for lot line adjustment and all the paperwork. Is that something that has to be done after the Z B A, Laura?
No, we can actually deny it. I was speaking with Linda today. He actually submitted a full signature on the lot line application. So we can actually just deny the lot line application as of today. And from there, you guys would have to make a recommendation to the zoning board. If we were able to get them onto the July meeting, which I think we can.
Yep.
You would want to be prepared to make a recommendation on the July tenth meeting.
Correct, July nineteenth is the Zoning Board of Appeals meeting, the next meeting.
Yeah.
Can you hear me okay, Mr. Pfeifer?
I, I, I can hear you. So, so, and I note, made note of of July tenth. So if the zoning board is not meeting before the tenth, a vote tonight would be moot if we could do it on this, on the tenth.
Right, well, the the agenda's already set for the next Zoning Board of Appeals, which is next week, I think, or something like that, right? So it's too late for the June meeting, so.
Be on the June meeting.
Okay.
It's too late for June, so we'll. So, you have any questions? I just have a couple of questions, looking at, you know, one of the things, and I, you know, I know you're familiar with us, is that we always look to keep any lots, you know, rectangular, you know, nice geometries for our lots. I think that's also in our comprehensive plan and in our guidelines. And the existing lot of Mr. Horton, you know, I guess, even though it's a keyhole lot, you know, it's pretty rectangular based. Obviously, your lot is kind of skewed, having, you know, his, you know, kind of injected into yours, right? But when you, after you do this lot line adjustment, what you've done is created two lots that aren't regular shaped versus the one, yours, okay? So I just, you know, so that's one comment. So one of the, did you talk to Mr. Horton about other options about, you know, like for your lot, instead of just taking the point zero eight seven, you know, coming straight down on the the one side there and actually have the shed on your property and take ownership of the shed? Did you have?
I, when, when my survey person came, she did prepare multiple options. And and one of the other options was extending the side of the triangle more than sixty-three point three feet. So that way, the the line would would give me ownership of of the shed. And Gary chose to do it this way. Gary is is currently facing some some medical issues. And me, me buying the portion from him would would be favorable to Gary. And he feels that it does not impact the value of his property in in any way. And he's comfortable doing this.
And the shed can't be moved?
That is correct.
One thing that that would be helpful, Mr. Pfeifer, before our next meeting. I didn't see any pictures of the shed, see what, you know, condition is, what it, what it looks like. Is that something we could have sent into the Planning Office so we could take a look at that?
I could go back with with my iPhone and take some pictures and email them to to Clark, yes.
Yeah, I'd like to see the, is it in good condition or?
Quite frankly, Mr. Walsh, it it's an older shed. It's, it's, Gary's shed is probably a small, one-car garage, very small. I don't think a car, a lawn tractor would fit in it. But it has a, an arched roof and it has a rolling overhead garage door for for entrance. I, I don't know if it's a dirt floor or a cement floor, but it's it's affixed to the ground with 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 footings. And and therefore, moving it would be impracticable.
Okay.
And it's definitely more than a hundred and twenty square feet.
That is correct.
Yeah, it'd be great to have, I didn't see the dimensions, some dimensions and a picture of it would be, would be good to have in order to help us to make our recommendation. Obviously, the Zoning Board of Appeals, you know, is the right agency to make the determination. We're just making a recommendation to them. the determination. We're just making a recommendation to them, but it helps, and it helps you, because any questions that we have, most likely, they'll also have, so...
So, Mr. Walsh, in, in regard to your comment about square lots, Cindy Elliott, my survey person, made the comment that this adjustment would conform both lots to something that was closer to a, a square. This is, again, a back corner of Gary's lot, kind of behind his shed, that's completely wooded, to remain wooded. My, my, my real big fear is, again, that somebody clears the woods and puts a fence up that would be about, you know, 20, 30 feet off of my back porch. And instead of sitting on my back porch drinking coffee, I would be looking at somebody's fence instead of looking into a nice, and, and the woods, it's, it's not a manicured. It, it's, it's sort of the, the way that, that any of the nature preserves would be. Down, if you're facing the front of my house at the end of Algonquin Road, if you're familiar with that, all of that is, is, is all naturally, and just naturally grown woods that we like and would want to preserve as much of that as possible.
Okay. And I, and I understand that, and that, that's important to me also, so I'm good with that. And again, it's just a, a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. And, you know, they're, they're the agency that makes the, the ultimate decision. One thing that's positive here, I mean, it's a unique situation. You're both in agreement. And the goal is, you know, does intrude, you know, his lot into yours. I could see that your point. And it'd be nice to have that safety factor for the future, so I would like that personally, too, so...
Would there be a recommendation, if we recommend approval, that when, when the shed needs to be replaced, it be placed further off the lot line?
I...
The zoning board can add conditions as they see fit to a resolution, but that isn't a typical condition that we see.
Yeah, because if they decide to...
But could, could it be a recommendation from us to them that they add it?
You could put that in your recommendation if you all vote for it.
They don't have to vote for it, but...
Yeah.
I mean, if, if the, Mr. Horton were ever to build another shed, he would have to get a building permit and would have to file all setbacks, or otherwise, the new one would be in front of the zoning board of appeals, so...
That's correct.
Yeah.
So the, if he was to expand that shed in any way, it would go back to the zoning board of appeals, as we look at anyway.
So to me, it's just important, I think, just to see what the shed looks like. I think you have a situation here where the neighbors are in agreement, you know, and appears to benefit both neighbors. I know where I stand. Like, I'd like to see a picture of the shed, but it's a recommendation, and we could take that up at our July 10th meeting, right?
Yeah, I mean, we do need to consider, obviously, the future of the lots, right? Not just the current neighbors. There's a little structure you have on your property right next to the 63.34 foot leg of that triangle. What is that?
Shed.
It's another shed?
That's a shed.
So again, not, it's not going to get moved or anything? I mean, right now, it's, it's awfully close to the property line that's existing, right?
You know how big your... That, my, my, my shed is a 14 feet across and six inches deep, six inches, six feet deep, excuse me. The, the front side of it is, is open. Again, my, my house, we moved here in '06. The house was built in 1954 by the Heath family. We're the second owners. So I, I'm, I'm sure that shed was built by Jack Heath 40, 50 years ago, and, and that shows as well. My, my shed is not long for the world. When it comes down, it's gone. Gary's shed is, is more, is, is old, but it's, it's a much better shed than my own.
Okay. So, so, so right now, Mr. Pfeifer's shed is actually non-conforming too, from the setback, right?
Yeah, it's pre-existing non-conforming, and this lot line would make it conforming.
Actually, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, so again, Mr. Pfeifer, just, and I mean, you know, you've heard it several times, you have to make a recommendation. One of the things you wrestle with is, you know, suitability views, impact on a comp plan. At, at, at the highest level, what's your motivation for doing this lot line adjustment? I mean, is it just that you want to preserve that area to be wooded forever, and so therefore, you want to be in ownership of it, or is it something else?
That, 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 that is, that is correct. And if, if you look at the lands of Desiderio, is, we share a driveway, and, and so there, there's no wood buffer there. But lands of Gillette, that back corner, is, is wooded. Lands of Maloney off to the, the left is Cayuga Court. That, that area, the, the back corner of, of Gary's lot, and the back corner of Gillette's lot, the back corner of Maloney, all of these lots are, are wooded, which is, is something that's, that's common on Algonquin and Cayuga, that when you have houses that would otherwise, their, their yards would look into each other, there, there tends to be a woods. And, and my objective is to keep as, as much of that as, as possible. When I first moved in, a, a tall tree fell in this area that we're talking about. And I asked Gary, Gary, you know, are you, are you going to chop that up and take it away? And he's like, no, gonna, you know, let it, let it go. And, and after, the longer I'm here, the, the more I agree with Gary that it, it's grown, it, it's natural. We don't take anything out. We don't put new, new, new plants in. You know, we might cut it back a little bit so, so it doesn't, you know, overgrow into our lawn. But it, it's, it, it looks like any other part of the lyshakil. And, and also, you could, from, from where we're, we're talking, if you were to stand on the end of Algonquin Road, which dead ends, you wouldn't see any of this. Desiderio and Gillette wouldn't see any of this. The people from Troy Road wouldn't see any of this. This, this triangular area is, is visible only by the people that, myself and Gary.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Pfeifer.
You're welcome.
All right. Is there any other questions or concerns? I think we, we should have at least a recommendation to the zoning board of appeals at our July 10th meeting for, so Mr. Pfeifer can be on July 19th zoning board, zoning board of appeals meeting. I just request, you know, you send some pictures into the planning office that they can distribute it to the planning board.
Yep. Just understand one thing a little bit better. So this applicant proposes a lot line adjustment that creates the non-conformance on another individual's property. Who's actually in front of the zoning board? I mean, I guess it's this applicant, but...
So actually, both property owners have to sign the application.
Right, okay.
Yeah.
So they're essentially both before the zoning board.
Right. Yep, okay.
But if, if Mr. Pfeifer is the only one that's going to be in attendance, he could have a letter that says he's representing the other applicant, right?
Mm-hmm. Well, they both already signed the application.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah. We got the signed papers today.
But, but the transfer hasn't occurred, right?
No, it can't without the plat, and the chairman's approval.
All right. I mean, I mean, we asked if we don't need to belabor it, but, you know, Mr. Pfeifer's property does, can become almost exactly a square. But he said it's one of the options that Mr. Horton did not consider.
It wasn't interested in, I heard.
Yeah. I, I don't know if we want to or want to probe that more, or we could just let it go. But gosh, it looks like, you know, we're taking a property that used to look like Pac-Man and making it look a little less like Pac-Man, but still like Pac-Man. Square Pac-Man. When the opportunity sits there to make at least his property completely square.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Horton wants to keep the garage, right? Because if you straighten the line out, he loses the shed or garage, whatever you would like to call it, right, Mr. Pfeifer?
That, that, that's correct. Again, I, I did have, have two professional drawings made. I gave Gary the choice, and, and this is, this is what he chose. So we have, we have two adults come to an agreement, and but for the, the shed that would be impracticable to move, this would be a lot simpler.
It would also be impractical, given that it's likely oriented facing Troy's connected E Road, for you to use that shed in its current configuration.
In, in order for me to, to, to get to Gary's shed, I would have to clear a significant amount of, of, hmm, 50-foot trees, a lot of huckleberry. And I, I would also have to trudge up, I'd have to leave my house, go down a hill, and then trudge back up the hill to get to his shed. And the current, the current door, doorway to his shed faces the word "boundary" that's in front of it. It doesn't face my property or the downhill area.
So you'd probably be destroying some wildlife habitat.
All right. Any, any further discussions or questions? All right, we'll make a recommendation at our July 10th meeting, Mr. Pfeifer, if you get the picture.
Thank you for your time, everybody. Much appreciated.
We appreciate you. Thank you. All right. I'll move on to reports, and let's see. I think we'll start with the benchmarking update. This is the deadline that we've been discussing, and the planning office has been working on for submittals for our meetings. Is that Mr. Henry? Do you want to speak about that?
Yes.
Sure. We just wanted to give a quick update. We've looked at the town of Clifton Park, Glenville, Half Moon, and Bethlehem, and we put a couple of slides together that we'll share with everyone at the next planning board meeting. So it's been, it's been an interesting little benchmarking exercise to look at their deadlines for receiving applicants' materials relative to the planning board meeting. So we just wanted to let everyone know that we did look into that, and we want to get the information out to you in your packets prior to the meeting. So we'll put it on the agenda for the July planning board meeting. And then Laura and I will recommend, we have to kind of look at it and recommend what we would like to do going forward. So we just wanted to give a quick update on that.
Thank you. Okay. And under reports, I think, Laura, would you like to discuss the current Airbnb status in the town of Niskiun?
Yeah, so currently, the town doesn't have a timeline for rentals. And we don't distinguish between short term and long term. So if a single-family home is being rented in the town of Niskiun, it can be rented for a day, or it can be rented for 15 years. So what the town of Niskiun does not allow is renting a piece of the home, because then it becomes two unrelated people living under a single roof, which is not allowed under our code. But if the whole house is rented to a, you know, other entity, that's not a violation of town code. We have, I think, twice looked at Airbnb regulations during our zoning code updates. Both times, I think, we haven't enacted them. Other codes have come to the surface. They are, I think, a little burdensome in that a couple of them, when we looked at, I know, Lake Placid, Lake Placid has a concern because people are actually like almost predatorially purchasing single-family homes. And the concentration of the single-family homes, I think, was concerning to Lake Placid. But, and I, I know, Leslie, you, you read them a lot. I don't remember them off the top of my head. But my recollect, my recollection of what we reviewed, it was more of a regulatory kind of money-collecting exercise in which can, in which we would review the Airbnbs in terms of like building inspection and that type of thing, like similar to what Saratoga does, and then sort of annually license them. I do not recall any type of like barrier to them going in. In my memory of the regulations that we've looked at, it's just been more of a regulation of building safety and revenue.
Right. Yeah, and building safety, like, also like trash, making sure trashcans are kept orally, that, you know, parking control, and make sure there's enough parking spaces in the driveway versus parking in the neighborhood.
When they're doing their applications.
But we don't have any of that in place right now.
We do not.
It's just something that we've been looking at.
We have looked at it.
And we had a couple of drafts, well, we looked at several different Airbnb regulations in different towns and villages in the past, but we haven't taken any action yet.
I did take a training on it last year, and I think it was the Lake Placid one that I really liked, because amongst other things, it limited the amount of time total that any one home could be leased out, so that its primary usage remained residential, not rental. Yeah.
Because long-term rentals are long-term rentals.
Right, and neither...
But, but then they establish, I mean, I've had neighbors who've been renting for, what, six, seven years already?
That's what I mean.
And they're, they're my neighbors.
They're my neighbors.
Not a problem. But when you have the short-term rentals, they're really not neighbors. They're there for maybe a weekend, maybe a couple of weeks, and the house starts to lose its residential quality. And I understand what the lady we spoke at the previous floor was concerned about. I, I have the same concern. So I, I would be willing to look at this sort of thing again. Don't know how the town board feels about it. If they have no interest in doing it, then we would just be spinning our wheels. But I think it makes sense.
Well, the codes that we looked at before is essentially, if you were going to conduct a short-term rental, you would have to take out a building permit with the town of Niskiun and, you know, and be like registered and licensed every year. So in terms of policing, we are a complaint-driven office. I mean, we don't, like, we, because we talked about it when we were looking at the other code. Like, you can't write in Airbnb, you can't write in Verbo, like, because these platforms, they grow and they change. So as far as like, you know, hiring a staff person to be going through all these sites and seeing what's listed for Niskiun, no. Typically complaint-driven. And I think the last time we looked at it, we hadn't gotten a complaint on Airbnb in like two or three years. So this is the first complaint that we've gotten in a couple of years.
Right. But with the absence of all that, I mean, this complaint isn't the, the style that the resident at the previous floor is making. It sounds more like a police complaint than a...
Uh, well, yes, I have mentioned to her that if the party seemed to be rowdy or too late, that that's a police call. But I don't believe that that's necessarily the issue. I think it's just the change in the number of people.
Right.
But we require people who run businesses from their homes to register those businesses. And to me, this is the same thing. You're using your home as a part-time business.
Yeah, I know, we, I mean, it's definitely...
And I think it needs to be, I really do think it should be looked at again, but...
Yeah. I mean, and you also have the concept, too, that someone could strictly buy a home in a residential area strictly to run that business, not, not even be a resident, right? Or recently a...
And I mean, I haven't looked at the map, but I think the last time we looked at the map, there were like two homes in all of the town of Niskiun that were Airbnbs. It may be more now.
It's definitely increased.
It's definitely increased.
Yeah.
So you see, the map, you mean, you go to like Airbnb, you say, search on Niskiun?
Yeah, and there was like two circles, because they don't give you the actual address, but they used to just kind of circle the general area.
And there's more vendors doing it, I believe.
Yeah, I mean, like I said, the last time we looked at it, I think, generally speaking, it's, wasn't a problem, but it may be a rising issue.
Yeah. And, and, and as you stated, they can just go ahead and do it. There's no formality right now. They don't have to notify that it's a short-term rental, that they don't have to do anything.
Correct. They just can't rent a room. But if they're listing their whole house, it's really not an issue.
Well, is this something...
You can list your whole house for any renter.
I know we've talked about in the past, and just, it wasn't a priority based on the limited number, but is this something the comprehensive planning committee has on their screen also, about recommendation?
Sounds like it's going to be.
Yeah. We can put it in.
Yeah.
But that might take a while.
What do we think the market drivers are? I mean, I thought when we were looking at the, the regulations, I thought it seems like there's a lot of structure for low likelihood, but if this is an incident, there's more happening. What's motivating it? Would you know, Chris, by chance?
Well, as, from a real estate agent perspective, there's been an increase opportunity for income in certain areas, and investors are taking advantage of that.
I get that. What's, what's motivating someone to actually take a leasehold, to take use of occupancy? It's probably, it's not a lease, right?
Only thing available.
To do what?
To rent. So like, they may not find a rental, and Airbnb investor might create an Airbnb short-term that creates a market for potential rental, whereas there are none typically, or not as easy to find.
But these are short-term duration work.
Not necessarily. You know, there, there's been a lot of targeting of smaller square-footage homes, one, two bedrooms, or converting a three-bedroom to a one, two-bedroom as an Airbnb. And sometimes it's short-term, and sometimes it's acceptable for the, to make it longer-term, which depletes the supply of, of starter homes and markets like this.
So this is maybe a point without any outcome, but...
Please pull the microphone forward, please. So the question is, right, if, if it's a short-term duration, if it's, if it's hotel...
So the question is, right, if it's a short-term duration, if it's hoteling, it's not a leasehold. It's a use in occupancy, right? You're not, you don't get the rights and benefits of a tenant if you're short-term. But if you're longer duration, does Airbnb and VRBO, do they offer leaseholds, right? So there's enhanced protections, right? It's a different status.
I don't know. I don't know what, I think that Airbnb is putting regulations around that, and they're policing their applicants a little bit more. And sometimes they're failing them on their application, and they're not prepared to do a short-term rental under Airbnb. But to the population, there's an increased trust in using Airbnb as the mechanism to rent.
For longer duration.
Whatever. If someone, like, for example, if you were going to book a home or a place to stay in the Poconos, and it's under Airbnb, the family, you yourself as a user, might feel comfortable doing that. As soon as that person isn't approved by Airbnb, they're not likely to rent, even though that was exactly the way it was always done before. You just rented from someone who owned a home. So the concept of trust has changed a little bit in the consumer population, in my opinion.
My only question is, is it a platform now to use for yearly leases?
I can't answer that. I don't think it is, but I don't know.
Well, the other question is regarding, I guess, the need, you know, why Niskiuna?
Yeah.
So if somebody's coming, and they want to have a weekend, or a week, or a month, whatever, what's the driver? Is it, you know, Union College, because their kid's going to school, or is it because the location near the airport? I mean, so there's got to be some reason why some towns or villages are more likely to have successful Airbnbs. And I think Niskiuna maybe, you know, just, I don't know.
My opinion on that is a lack of inventory.
Okay.
In a good school district.
So do we know for sure the property that the resident referred to, Laura? Because I think she said she talked to you. Is that an Airbnb? Because I'm looking here in the Airbnb site, and I don't see something on Roughland Road. I mean, I'm not a...
Did you pick a date?
I mean, we sometimes just call things Airbnb, but there's a variety of different sites. Like, whether it's hosted on the actual Airbnb site, or the Verbo, or, you know...
And there's no documenting of that that's required by residents to see what kind of a rental business they're running in their home.
We do, we have not regulated rental contracts in the town of Niskiuna. We do not.
Yeah, yeah. Just making sure.
You're seeing none, Mr. Cop?
Nothing on Roughland Road. Well, maybe there is one, maybe there is one on Roughland Road, actually. I take that back.
It's normally like a...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, no, no. I think it's coming up, but I think maybe there is one for, okay. Interesting.
Does it actually have an address, Mr. Scrivett?
No, I think they, I think they don't.
They don't put actual addresses. It's usually actually.
Yeah, no, there's, there is.
There's several.
There's Roughland Road showing one right there.
Showing one. That's probably per night. I would imagine that fee.
The $400. How much is your $400 bucks per night?
Yep.
Wow.
But I'm mystified like you. Like, I just, what's the why?
You can understand Saratoga. You can understand all of me, you know.
Yeah.
But I guess it's a good, safe location, so maybe that's what's desirable. It is close to the airport. I mean, if you're...
Yeah.
It's like the point about going to school district, I think you need to have a long-term, right, to be able to register your child in the school. And I don't think we'd be able to do that with a short-term rental, right? Unless the school doesn't know, you know, all they got is an address, and here's where I'm living, right?
Okay. So I guess the only actionable thing we can do is consider whether we want to...
Re-look at that code.
Re-look at the code again, right?
Probably seems like the right thing to do, right? At least let the comprehensive plan committee make a recommendation, since that's an active committee, and I'm sure it's trying to get things done this year, because at least the recommendation's done this year.
I think it's going to be next year before it's finalized.
Oh, no, before, well, the comprehensive plan or the Airbnb?
The comprehensive plan.
The comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive.
Yeah, I would expect the Airbnb, you know, getting things done this year to start, you know, at least. Got quite a bit of...
I mean, we could look at the last code that we reviewed.
Does Bethlehem, it seems like Bethlehem seems to be the go-to. Do they have one down?
I have not looked at Bethlehem.
That might be worth a while in there to see what they got. They seem like they...
It's a similar neighborhood, similar town.
Yeah. I think the town is just subject to a localized amount of time where maybe close to U Albany graduation or Union College graduation, families might have come in for a quick period. If a house is renting for $400 a night, that's relatively cheap to get a house for a day. And if it turns into a frequent thing where users are coming to use it as a party house, or to get away for a weekend or something like that, it's not a lot of money to split between several people, especially if there are several cars that are filling up driveways, parking on the streets, which you can park on the street overnight now. So I think maybe it's just something that the, you know, planning department keeps their eye on. If there's continual complaints, then, you know, once a listing gets too many complaints, that's going to be, it's going to be, it's pretty heavily placed.
Yeah. Well, the other alternative is when we looked at these, I guess they call them extensive potential codes for, you know, short-term rentals. Maybe we do something that's, you know, simple. It just says that they need to register, and there are certain guidelines to follow, like, you know, keep the trash, park in the driveway, and, you know, obey the noise ordinance, et cetera, et cetera. Just something to get started. And that way, at least, the town would know where they are, and it would collect the fee for them to at least register, maybe, or some.
I'm not an expert, though, but I think once you start sort of inserting yourself between like the landlord-tenant contracts, you have to do a building inspection, would be my guess.
Yeah.
Because like, you can't register and then say, yeah, we're taking your money, but whatever's inside your house is fine. Like, I think you have to, your building inspector has to go in and check.
Check smoke detectors.
Smoke detectors, and there's access, and that, yeah, becomes, yeah. And I'm not 100% sure about that, but it'd be my guess. Like, once you do a registration, I think you're going to have to do a full building safety inspection, probably like annually. Yeah.
But that's not necessarily bad.
It's not necessarily bad, but I think you have to define it.
It can be burdensome on inspectors, I know.
And you may have to...
Listen, I mean...
But there's also a benefit to the property owner in that they've got the documentation that things were in order. And if the renter leaves things otherwise, they've got documentation, and they've got a way of going after them.
Yeah. I mean, it's an extra like layer of government that we don't have in the town of Niskiuna yet. Like, it would definitely be like, you know, registration, you've got to pay, the building inspector's got to go in, even if you're going to do it very mildly. It definitely, like, I mean, that's why we've looked at it before.
Yeah.
Like, you know, and I think at the time, it was like, okay, well, if we're adopting chicken code, that's going to be registration, annual inspections, building inspections, nuisance complaints. Like, we are continually adding, you know, jobs and duties to the town. It's just a balance, you know?
And obviously, we should pass the fees, you know, on to the owner, too, for those inspections.
Yeah. I mean, you can pass the fees on. I mean, and like, we're looking at, you know, potentially expanding the building department a little bit. So, but, you know, I think that that's where the balance lies, if you're going to adopt kind of an onerous code, like, it's just...
You know, one thing to think about this is get behind the economics. Like, I find it hard to believe that you would get that much rental volume to cover the cost. I mean, in my estimation, the economics are in favor of just flipping the property, selling it. So if something else is going on, I bet you that it's unique in particular to this property. You know, are there overdue taxes? Is there a foreclosure? I mean, it doesn't stand to reason, given this market, that somebody is covering their nut on an occasional $400 rental, and it's going to be variable. And it's not a consistent, something's upside down. And I think it's behind, it's inside the economics here, which can't really crack. Be curious to see, is there a lien? Is there municipal? I mean, those are all public records we could pull. We could figure that out.
I mean, they're literally advertising Wi-Fi speed and remote work on the Airbnb site for scrappy. The Wi-Fi speed and remote work, ideal for remote work. That's the main selling points that pop to the top.
Like somebody's coming from out of town to do a, you know, a six-month job, and they need to be in the area.
Or according to the resident, a six-day job.
Yeah, or whatever. Yeah. Yep.
There's definitely, there's, again, it's a shift in mindset. People who travel and work remotely occasionally are looking at Airbnb. So if you go in Schenectady, I'll check that versus a hotel.
Yep.
And that's why they go. And they may also look into, you know, well, what's this neighborhood versus that neighborhood, and Niskiuna may stand out for one reason or another. Mature growth, big trees, you know, that kind of thing. But I think there's more than we are aware of.
Oh, yeah.
And if they're not visible on the app, they're in the works.
Yep. I mean, I think Niskiuna's kind of no hotel policy would tend to drive this, right?
The, what was the...
I mean, we don't have hotels in the town, right?
It's no policy on not having them, just so we don't have.
Yeah, we don't have a hotel, yeah.
You're just allowed to rent. You can't split your home, but you can rent your home.
And do we require rental certificates for those long-term? Well, we do not, yeah. So there is no inspection within our town, yeah. Interesting.
We just regard single-family homes to have, you know...
What, there's?
Yeah, single-family. But it can't be, it can't be multi-family residence.
Yep. Okay. All right. So you see, it's going to take some time to resolve. It's not as simple as we'd like it to be. Sure. You just need to come up so we get you on the...
I just want to say, I, you know, I want to help the family. I don't, I don't want to call it, like, what if they do eventually move in? It's just for me, as a person, it feels unsafe. And all the neighbors are upset, and they were like, there it is, go to the town, go to town. So that's why I'm here, because everyone told me to come to the town. Is it legal? I'm like, I don't know if it's legal.
It is legal. That sounds like it is legal.
It's legal. And like, just, and like, as a point of clarification, even if we adopted the code, the code is probably not going to say that that can't happen.
Right.
It's just like, as a resident, I bought a house to be the residential area. I didn't buy a house to live next to a hotel. And I think your questions are excellent about, like, what's driving it. I don't really know. You know, if there's trouble, I'm not the first to call police. They're on the property, they drink a little, that's okay. You know, some of them are kind of a little wild, and some of them are probably graduations, or weddings, or, but it's very disheartening to me, because I didn't move to this area to be next to people I don't know. And I said to the young woman, too, I said, you know who's coming in? Are you screening them? And she said, no, I don't move on. And so this different license plates. So sometimes I'll take, you know, a picture, just because I don't want to be robbed. And I'm a New Yorker, so my mind is kind of that mindset. But if it's legal, then I want to help her, you know, keep it safe. But it just changes the nature of the street. And a lot of people are upset. A lot of people said to me, if that happened, my wife would be with us. I tend to be a little more calm, but I am upset. I put up cameras. If I want to put up trees, it's 10,000. I, it's just, it's tough. You know, it's not like K-Cod, you know, like, you rent a place, and you know the owner's next door. You don't know who these people are. So I feel like neighbors should know. I think in September, people are renting the house. Little children shouldn't be on a bus stop without adult supervision. That's just me caring for kids. As far as me, my, you know, I'm not, I'm not as happy anymore. Like, if you listen to some of the people speaking, there were, you know, they want to keep trees in their backyard. They want to have a fence, you know. That's nice. That's nice, because they know their neighbors. I don't know why they use a whole, but I get it, because Airbnb is popular. But if you look at the literature, they are bringing down neighborhoods. They're bringing down property values. And some countries actually say, please don't rent an Airbnb, use our hotels. I, you know, I don't know what to say. There's nothing I could say. It's legal, I'll deal with it. But it's sad, because I think I said to Laura, you have a choice to live next to, you know, Kevin Walsh and his family, or, you know, this house that's rented out every, I mean, the last people there were there five nights, last week was three nights, last week was, it's just constant. It's coming and going, and it's anxiety to work in, because are they really supposed to be there? Did the owner check? Did they stay an extra day? What are they doing? You know, I don't know.
Yeah. I can understand your concerns.
Anyway, I'm going to try to help them, as long as it's legal. But I do think that it's wrong for people to buy a house dead in the center of a residential area and start renting it, you know, for a term rental. And so neighbors ask me to come. I'll tell them it's legal.
Yep.
And we'll just keep an eye on it.
And again, you could tell them, we've talked about before, it's on our screen. It wasn't a priority, but, you know, with the cop plan committee, it's on our screen. It's going to take, it's going to take, it's going to take some time.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it seems like the information's available on the Airbnb. You could even check attendance dates and all that stuff, so. Airbnb, that's what I looked at. But I don't know if it's the same property, but it looks like it could be.
Someone sent it to me. The neighbors all knew. I didn't know. So.
Okay. Well, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah. Thank you, and good luck.
And have a lovely evening. Thank you.
And thank you, Laura. Appreciate that. All right, Commission Business, anybody have any questions, comments? I got one thing, and I thank Mr. Henry for texting me. I did forget. On 1222 Troy Road and on 2386 Algonquin, like to have some project leads for each of those for our next meeting. For the Troy Road, obviously, the church, and for Algonquin, just to make her, you know, help with the recommendation to the zoning board of appeals. So if you don't know tonight, I'll send out an email to everybody. You can let me know on the form planning office. Okay? Thanks, Mr. Henry. Any other questions for Laura or Clark, or the attorney? Any questions for anybody? No?
I just wanted to mention, I will be unable to attend the next meeting in July, to be away with my family.
Thank you. All right. Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Gold. I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay. I assume we're all in favor in adjournment? Have a good night, and thank you, everybody.
A little longer than we thought.
Exactly. How you been? Okay.